Hey, I'd like to welcome everyone to the Ashington County Commission meeting Tuesday, January twenty fourth. You would please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, public comment. I see no one, so we will go on. I will have a few additions to the agenda with a couple of purchase orders. Reading an approval of the minutes. Did everyone have a chance to read the minutes?
Yes. I also have addition to the agenda to do with that now.
Yes, please.
I just wanted to ask you to do a little bit of ARPA discussion. Yeah, we'll move to approve the minutes. One second.
It's been moved to seconded. All those in favor say aye. Passes three to zero. Okay, Commissioner comments and committee reports.
I don't really have anything.
Going into project concern. Just brought a report back that I've been on that for a short time as a city rep in Al County, but they uh. Their attendance is still, that again is pretty decent, but nationally it's not doing quite as well like it was before COVID and so. So somebody give you a chance to encourage anyone you may know or. Uh to try to attend some of that during training, increase activities and uh. Um things to cause a little more interest to kind of get the attendance up a little bit back to three levels. Uh the other thing I did with the EDAG and uh. That was very good, uh, meeting and they were going through a lot of the ARPA requests that they're handling for the city as far as to kind of screen them and. Then make recommendations back to the city and that that process, that's very interesting. So. Uh, that's something I'll be talking about a little more that we help have them help us or whether we just try and use the kind of the process they've been using, but I want to learn more about what you guys have been doing. So uh, uh, those are both very good. And tomorrow I'm going to local government day down in Topeka. Uh, K E C, so.
Perfect. Okay, EMS Commission summary for two thousand and twenty-two. Uh, received and filed that. Uh Debbie Thompson, county appraiser, uh she had given us. A purchase order. Um, she is suggesting that we go with uh vendor postalocity. Um, she got um. A couple quotes based on her needs of um. The two thousand and twenty-three change of value real estate notices to print them and send them out. And this PO is for postalocity and the amount of five thousand seven thirty-eight sixty-six. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Passes three to zero. Okay, uh, next is Joe Snyder, Roden Bridge with a bridge planks purchase order.
Well, afternoon.
Hi.
We have a, we sent out three quotes and for bridge planks with copper and anthemate. And there's sixty-four sixteen footers, sixty-four eighteen footers and sixty-four twenty footers. Uh, we selected what we thought was the best quote and thirty-one thousand nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars and eighty-four cents.
Okay, uh, Joe with Roden Bridge is suggesting we go with the Wheeler. Um, for thirty-one thousand nine sixty-nine eighty-four. Do I have a motion to approve?
So.
Okay, it's been moved in a second and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes three to zero.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. All right, next is the ASAF and USD three seventy-seven sports complex maintenance request. Um, so this is quarterly, um, and the first quarter payment. For maintenance for USD three seventy-seven is twenty-five hundred and for first quarter payment to ASAF is ten thousand. Um, so the total amount to be paid from the fund is twelve thousand five hundred dollars. Um, do I have a motion to allow the chairwoman to sign this um? Authorization for the first quarter payment.
So.
Okay, moved to seconded. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay, I will sign that. And then also the county clerk was going to request um. A copy of the budgets if they submit those to us each year too. All right. Next, I have Roger Denton, uh, GIS coordinator that's going to discuss the floodplain management.
Are you ready?
Yes, sir.
Now, try and get this up and get my. Presentation going with you. Um, I sent you all an email this morning. Were you able to? To get that with a number of attachments? Believe this will still have me on. And then I can share this out on the screens. Can somebody help me how I get this on the screen? Oh, there we go. Hopefully. All right. What I would, what I want to talk to you about today for a few minutes is develop uh. Floodplain management and how it works, uh, because there was some question about it and I want you all to have a good understanding of what it is. Uh, there are only three things I'm gonna tell you about today. The history, how we got where we are. Um, how the permit works and then what all has changed today, but the additions to that are. And so I sent you an email. It's gonna have all of this information in it. Uh, basically the history back in the uh nineteen seventies. Congress passed an act which was called the Disaster Relief Act. That set up. And and I'm, I'm not going back into their enabling for this, but that set up FEMA, which is the Federal Emergency Management Association. At that point, they enacted something known as flood insurance. Now, when they did that. I don't think people truly understood it, but what they did is they took over all flood insurance. So you can't buy flood insurance anywhere except from the federal government. You buy it from your local agent, but they're buying it from the federal government. So they govern all of those regulations. Now, we dealt with it for years and one of the things that I will tell you about it is originally when it was set up, it was set up like insurance where it was all actuary based. And then what they found is that they were using almost a hundred percent of the money they took in from administration. And so they were to the point where every time there was a disaster, they came back to Congress to get more money. You're gonna see that continual fight going on, but as far as, as far as. Helping regulate themselves, what they did is in two thousand and five, they came to Ashington County. And they told the commission then that they needed to. Enact this resolution. Participating in. The Federal Emergency Management Association. Now, there were really two things that were tied to it. Number one, if you didn't go along with it. Then you couldn't be a part of the Federal Emergency Management Association. So if there were disasters and there were relief. You wouldn't be subject to those. No one in your community would be eligible for flood insurance. And the other little thing that was in there and and I will show you, uh, the other little thing that was in there was that uh. You couldn't get any loans. Because ninety-five percent of the loans are tied to federal. Uh, insurance and communities who did not participate could not participate in federally insured loans. Now. Having said that, it might look a little like extortion. But what the government does is that. And so they worked directly on all of those issues to make sure that. Uh, you, you participate with them. So in two thousand and five, our commission passed a resolution that said. We're gonna participate with you in FEMA and the federal disaster stuff and at that time. They agreed to a number of things. Now, I'm gonna uh roll through this in my involvement in it and then I'll go back and point out some of the things that went along with it. So in two thousand and twelve, I came to work for the, for the county part-time temporary to do uh some ag appraisal updates. Um, every couple of years, we've got to do ag appraisal updates and that year they were doing in two thousand and twelve, they were doing a major update. And so they had me on halftime and I was just doing ag appraisal. Um, at that time, Tony Redden was the GIS coordinator. Uh, Tony went out for shoulder surgery and never came back to work for the county. And when that occurred, um, the commissioner spoke with me. Um, I agreed to do it if I could do it part-time. I did that part-time uh for about eight years. And during that eight years, I think everyone was fairly happy with it. Uh, but it got to where I was doing a lot of other things and then we hired on Jack and I think uh two of you are here when we hired on Jack so that we could get some of those other things going. Now, in two thousand and thirteen, I got. A call from the Department of Agriculture saying, we're reviewing you for violation of the terms of your resolution. And threatening to put us on uh. Probation in terms of our FEMA stuff. So. Uh, my position was, I said, I don't know why you're talking to me. I didn't even know I had anything to do with this. Um, he said, well, you're listed as the floodplain manager for or administrator. For Ashington County and I said, well, I wasn't aware of that. Uh, we had some little conversations. I spoke to Wes. Wes said, yes, I signed you up for that. Um, I think he reiterated that the other day. And then I spoke with uh Mr. Maury who, who said, well, here's what we're gonna do. Uh, so that we can explain to you what all has to go on. Uh, there's a four-day training going on in Wichita in about two months. I went to the four-day training. I spent time talking with him and basically he put us on a correctional path which said. We have to fix some things or they were going to. Diminish our status. Now, you might think, well, who cares? But the reality is. It meant that if they did that, then all people who were on federal flood insurance already, their premiums would go up substantially. Uh, because we were a community which was not in uh harmony with what they wanted done. So we took care of things and at that time I went to the county commission and said. Wow, one of the things they wanted us to do. And I'm, I'm uh, at the time we applied and I'm gonna show you a couple of documents and these are out there for you to look at. It wasn't like, gee, we'll do a resolution says we agree. They give us the resolution that they want passed. They will let us make changes and modifications to it, but once we pass the resolution, then we had to send it back to FEMA. To get them to give us a letter of approval of our resolution that we did. So there's a letter in there that shows. Uh, George Ross was the, was the chairman of the planet of the county commission at that time and and it says. Uh, that we wanted to participate and here's what we were going to do. They approved that two thousand and five ordinance. Now. What they did and and there is one that says what happens when a community does not enforce its floodplain management. Uh, ordinance, uh, the community is required to uh adopt and enforce a floodplain ordinance. It goes on to say that they're going to put these regulations against us when we do those things. It also sets up what the duties of the floodplain administrator are. And so it sets up all of these things that I'm supposed to be doing in order to keep us in compliance. Having done that. We got back on good track with them, but one of the things that we had to do is in two thousand and thirteen, I went to the county commission and said, we need to enact a development permit. One of their rules is that if you don't issue permits. Then you can't do what you said you were gonna do in this two thousand and five ordinance or resolution. And that means that we have to look at every piece of development and improvement that goes on. And say it's either in compliance or it's not in compliance. Now, we charge nothing for it. Never have, still don't. The permit is absolutely free. It's been on a voluntary situation, except that it's required. But we don't have an administration. People say, well, when are you gonna come out and inspect? We don't go inspect. We don't do any of those, but we aren't charging them either. And we'll help them fill it out. It's usually uh, most of it is done online and I will explain all of that in a moment. Uh, but the idea is. That we started issuing those permits. Now, one of the things to keep in mind. They told us even at that time, we weren't, we weren't doing any permitting from two thousand and five when they passed it until two thousand and thirteen. Several people built within the floodplain during that time. Substantial improvements. And the state's point to us was. That might be construed a libelous position. We don't want to see you there. Um, I think I discussed it with Pat at that time. I discussed it with the commission at that time. It's just not something we wanted to do. So we wanted to get ourselves into compliance. So everything moving forward, we were gonna be doing okay. Um, in two thousand and fourteen. After we had done that, then they came in and upgraded all of our flood insurance uh rate maps. Yeah, they're called FIRM, stands for flood insurance rate maps. And they changed it over what they call a digital flood insurance rate map. So we're digital now. And those digital rate maps are all available out online. In two thousand and fourteen, they had changed the rules a little bit and they came back and said. Now, what you need to do is you need to pass a new resolution and this new resolution takes into account the new things. They had to approve the format of it and go through all of that again. And now we're operating off of a resolution that occurred in two thousand and fourteen. So that is the history of it to date and. I showed you most of these. One of the things uh. That I will show you here is that there is a spot in the, in the circular that says requiring permits. We have to require permits for all proposed construction or other development in the community, including the placement of manufactured homes. Uh, so that it may be determined whether such construction or development is proposed within a flood-prone area. Their rules say we must permit all development because otherwise we have no way of saying what is going to happen. Okay? Now. Running on through this, the term development and and I spoke with Commissioner Quinn about this. Uh, early in her term because she said, why would we be requiring it for all of these things? That's not my definition. That is FEMA's definition, which is enforced by the state. It says development means any man-made change. To improved or unimproved real estate, including but not limited to buildings or other structures. Mining, dredging, filling, grading, paving, excavation, or drilling operations, or storage of equipment and materials. Questions might come up about why such a vivid wide uh definition of development and that is because. Let's say you have a landfill or a salvage yard that's in a floodplain. And floodwater rushes down through and then it moves on downstream and causes the water to go somewhere else. Then you cause flooding in an area that may not have previously been subject to it. Why improvements? Why if somebody's doing improvements on the interior of their home, would we require this? Well, we have properties in Ashington County that are built within the floodplain. And when they request improvement, what they're doing is increasing the burden of their flood insurance. And the federal government is saying you can't improve those unless you start bringing things into compliance. And so you have those situations. We have one right now where the people have requested adding on. Uh, and attach garage onto a house that's already in the floodplain. And. I know they're not happy about it, but the reality is we deal with FEMA, we deal with the Department of Agriculture and. And the administration and they're the ones who help us work through this. Now, if you go on our website. Everybody wonders how tough this is to find. If you go down to the blue band, there is a spot right there on our website that says development permit. If you hit that development permit. It comes up and you can just fill it out and save a copy to your computer right there, or you can download it to your computer and save it. This is what it looks like. It's two pages long. The first page, you put your name, your address, the location where you want to do it and what kind of project it's gonna be. Then there are five questions. The five questions are, and I was wrong on this the other day, uh, the first one is actually, do you need an address? And it says right there, if you need an address, uh, it's gonna say uh what all you need. The second question is, uh, will the property apply for the, the neighborhood revitalization program? Uh, the third question is, will this project require an onsite sanitary disposal system? And uh, the last two questions deal with floodplain and. Bloodway. Okay, the difference is floodplain is that area which is likely to flood. Floodway is that area which carries water to get it away from. Okay? Two pages, five questions. We just went over those. Flood hazard area, development restriction is to one foot above the base flood elevation. That means in the state of Kansas, Kansas has passed a law that says if you want, if you have a house. That's near the floodplain, you have to elevate your structure so that all floors are at least one foot above the base flood elevation. Now you would say, well, what about a basement? Well, those are the details and I'm not trying to get into the details, but the basement's also required to be one foot above the base flood elevation. To get away from that, you have to flood-proof everything to at least one foot above that base flood elevation. And that's to keep. From having people with dangerous structures. Getting them insured. Okay, it's, it's, that's, that's simple. And to keep people from building things in that manner. Now, our development permission permit has to be signed by the owner or their authorized agent. And the reason why is um. I know this sounds strange, but we will get uh five to ten people a year who want to come in and get an address on property they don't know. Uh, and you would go, well, why would that happen? Well. It, it happens all the time. You'll get tenants come in who want to move another mobile home in on a piece of property that they're renting. Uh, and they want another address for it. We just say, no, it has to be the owner. The owner has to come in and get that information going. Uh, there is an advantage. And let me explain to you what that advantage is and your first thought is, well, this is terrible, but how would there ever be an advantage? Um, I'm gonna give you an example of a piece of property. Rob Emery, where he built out where Highway one sixteen comes off of fifty-nine. Where he built. The rules say. That if you don't have these things in place and you're not issuing permits, if the floodplain touches your property anywhere. You have to guarantee. Your lending institution and FEMA. That you're not in the floodplain. And in order to do that, you have to get an elevation certificate. He spent thousands of dollars getting an elevation certificate. Now that we issue permits, we can look at where it is, what the elevations are, and we can stipulate that it's not within that floodplain. We could have saved him money. Um, but he did that just before we got into this situation. Okay? Uh, the five questions that we're asking, they're right there under the address. We say in accordance with resolution. Uh, two thousand and eighteen, fourteen forty-three, all new addresses will be required to pay a two hundred and fifty dollar nine-one-one addressing fee. Be paid with this application. Now, I know I said the application was free. The application is free. The addresses are not. Okay? A driveway and and for your information and I'm, I'm gonna throw this in additionally, um. There weren't, there weren't. Uh, any serious addressing issues. Ten or fifteen years ago. It's only been in the last ten years that the state of Kansas has said. We have to straighten out the nine-one-one addressing situation. Prior to that, there were five or six different addressing systems. We issued addresses, the appraiser issued addresses, the voter people issued addresses, the utility companies, gas, electric. They all issued addresses, the water companies issued addresses, uh, the post office issued addresses and you had all these different address systems out there. And you might go, how does that work? I'm gonna tell you what, a mere twenty years ago, roads didn't even bother to have names. You didn't have a mailbox that said this address at this road. Um, I, when we grew up, it was just rural out number four. Your mailman knew who lived there. That was it. In recent years, because of litigation and uh all the things that are going on, nine-one-one. Must, we have to have an address system that says all of the addresses are on our system. So. We do require this nine-one-one addressing and we let only one person issue those addresses and gee, I'm the lucky guy who gets to do that right now. Um, but that's part of what we do. Uh, we also say a driveway permit from Roden Bridge or the appropriate township must be attached to this application. Road policies and applications can be found at and we put the website on there where to find all of those things. The second thing, uh, property can apply for neighborhood revitalization tax rebate. It's as you said the other day, well, what if they don't know what that is? This puts them on notice it's there, then they can ask. The ability to, uh, so many people come in and say, well, I've already started this, but we heard about this. Can we get approved now? Well, the rules of the program say no. It's not your rules. This is the state of Kansas rules. Say no, you can't do that. Um, when I worked with Leavenworth, I had the same situation. People would want to come in and get an approval. There's no. There is no procedure for getting an approval if your construction has already started. So in this case, this puts them in a spot where before construction starts, they can ask the question, we can answer the question and they can get on the program. The next question, requiring an onsite sanitary waste disposal system. You would be amazed how many people. Build uh a house. Without any thought of where they're gonna put their septic system and then they end up putting their septic system on someone else's property. Uh, I know that sounds shocking, uh. But. Probably about six times a year, we run into this situation where someone buys a piece of property and then they discover that. That their septic or lagoon is on someone else's property. I don't know how you can call it an onsite disposal system if it's on somebody else's site. Regardless, all we're trying to do is stop them from having that problem by asking that question and saying before we're gonna issue you a permit. Get it something that says you can put it on your site and where it's gonna go and that way you can make that appropriate decision. The next two questions, one, is it in an area of special flood hazard? Uh, if yes, an elevation certificate is required. Um, we've had several of those just recently again. These are not, you, you might think these things just don't occur in Ashington County, but they do. And is the development in a floodway? And the statement is if yes, you have to issue a no rise certificate. No rise means. It's gonna require an engineer to look at it and say, having this in the floodplain. Won't cause anyone else a problem. Now, your question might be, well. What about, we do lots of stuff. Every time we do a bridge. The bridge has to have a permit. We have to run that through. The state wants to make sure that we have these things and it says, yes, it is in a floodplain and no, it won't rise. The creek and cause someone else more problems. And so we go through these and these do occur, um, so far. Um, we have issued. Four hundred and sixty-four permits since two thousand and fourteen. Uh, just this year so far, we are up close to eighty. That tells me a lot of people do know what's going on and do come in and work with us on this. Now, since that time. Initially, when we did this, it was a two-page document. Very simple, no charge. We'd help you. If you don't have a site plan, we'll print one out. That has the floodplanes on it, the topo lines, all of those things and we'll even help you. We'll show you and we'll locate it on the site for you and then you can initial the site saying, yeah, that's where I'm putting the house. And here's where the driveway is gonna come in because I can't issue anymore an address off of one road where they're gonna drive off the other road. It does a couple of things that also there are, we have a lot of roads out there that Ashington County does not own. They've just been there a long time. Somebody started maintaining them. And if they don't have any legal existence, when this comes up, we will say. And if they don't have any legal existence, when this comes up, we will say, I can't issue an address off of a road. That doesn't have a legal existence. Because one thing that's occurred in the last ten years with the addition of the nine one one addressing systems. Is they also have put in center lines that have range addresses on them that say. From this point to this point, here's the range of numbers that are allowed for that, so that the locational systems. That are used within vehicles can find those locations. Our emergency service vehicles use those same things to help them find. Uh, properties that they're going for. Now. The changes are, we've added in the address system that wasn't originally part of it. Uh, but we realized that, uh, it was easier to issue that address at a time when they were coming for the permit. Than to try and issue it later. Uh, and the NRP, uh, for tax rebates, it puts them on notice. Uh, the wastewater, that was added to it afterwards, originally it wasn't in there. Uh, the floodplain restrictions prohibits and protects. There are things that are changing with that constantly. And when they do, then it allows us to answer those questions and go on with them. Um, driveways, that's one of the more recent additions and it's because. When we're issuing a new address, when there's a new driveway going in, the county should be involved in where that's going. Uh, for the safety of the general public and these are the things that we've added on. The process is pretty simple. You don't have to come to us first, you can actually go get your wastewater permit going, you can go to the road and bridge and get your. Your drive permit going, but you've got to have all three of those things, when we get those coming in, then we will. Look at it, we know that everything's right, we'll issue an address. And then when all of these things are in, you can start your construction. Uh, it's just. Half the people these days. Don't want anything restricting them, the other half want to know what our rules are because they can't believe that there are no protections. So all these things, just like anything else we talk about, there are the, there are the restriction side and there are the protection sides. This is a map that shows the locations within Ashland County where we have issued permits. Uh, since two thousand and fourteen, so you might think, gee, it's all going to be around the cities, it is not. Uh, it is all over the county and these issues, uh. There are as many things being solved as created when we do these. A lot of people. Call us and ask for things. I will also tell you, just today, walking in our office was, uh, someone from the state of Kansas who walked in and said. Ask who issues permits in the county? Um, I said, well, we do development permits, um. This lady, Ms. Peyton. Said she's with the lead enforcement division of the state of Kansas and that. All contractors are required to have lead if they work on a house. Do any remodeling that involves more than six square feet, uh. Wall space, they're required to have a lead. Certification from the state of Kansas and pay extra fees. And, and I just said, well, we, we don't enforce all those things and she said, no, the state will enforce them. They just want to know that they're happening and where they can go to find them. Uh, but I'm telling you, there are more and more. Things going on, we have the same situation where the state of Kansas just recently enacted a, uh, a roofing repair. Uh, license. Where you have to be licensed in the state of Kansas to put a new roof on a structure. Um, we don't enforce those things. But there are more and more of those things coming up and I'm warning you because don't think that we're the ones enforcing those. We're really not, and I, I went out online to see. There are hardly any contractors in Ashland County that are actually certified in those areas, so. Um. It doesn't require, and, and I specifically ask about Ashland County. Um, if you're doing your own work, it doesn't require it and if you hire your own employees and do the work, it doesn't require it, so. Uh, we're exempt from that at the county. Uh, that is a nice thing to hear, uh, but anyway. It's just to tell you that, uh, it is tough to get away from these things, it easy, this is easy to see them expand. Now, that is my little presentation on what we do, so please in the future, if, if someone asks you, tell them we do have permitting. Send them our direction, we'll help them get it fixed, most people don't even have to come in the office. Do you have any questions?
Uh. There's been legislation, I believe it's been passed now, it's the waters of the US, which is a federal. Um, it's going to regulate all waters that they deem navigable, which is. A curb in front of. The courthouse would be subject to being. Uh, in for, or, um. Have regulations on what can happen with this law. So with that, I mean, well, uh, well, you know, I was just wondering if you've had anything that. Has come down, I mean, will that, will they be coming for you? Report that to them, if there's been something in the future, maybe it'll be changed, will they? I mean, because I know there will be a lot of regulations with. With this, because it's been a fight and I was just wondering if there's been anything hinted at yet. This is the law that could possibly make farmer spence creaks so the cattle can't get in them, that's, it's that law. Uh, yeah, it's, it's far ranging, far ranging and it could get sticky. So, I mean, I was just wondering if you had heard anything about that.
I am not yet versed enough in that law. To address it. Uh, do we hear about those things? Yes. Um. And, and again, uh, please understand, I'm not the guy who wants these laws. I have said. Long ago. That, uh, the only reason that we have a development permit is because I came to the county and said, you've got two choices. Either we comply with the ordinance which the previous commission passed or just replace my name on that sheet and I can quietly go away. Um. The same thing is true when the lady walks in my office about, uh, lead based paint and. Uh, restricting people who can repair a structure prior to, uh, nineteen seventy-eight. Um, I'm not the, uh, the rosy guy who's looking at, oh, how do I help you? I'm saying, you know. What is the legislation by which this occurred? When did this get enacted? And who's going to take care of it? Uh, that's traditionally my position and much like you, Eric, so.
Yeah, I mean, that's a lot of scary stuff that could, could be eventually. Proposed or enforced upon the. Smaller counties, we couldn't do anything about.
We do so many bad things for the right reasons.
Do you know that resolution number from two thousand five, I chance that?
Eh, I sent that to you this morning.
Okay, so that was one of the.
That is one of the.
I just want to notate that and read through it, um.
Twelve sixty.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Yes.
And then I just want to say thank you because. As a new com- well, I'm not really new, I'm happy, but like a newer commissioner, like, who's trying to. Build consistency. And follow policy and have the same conversations with everyone countywide. I've found that the. Everyday public who doesn't follow the county commission doesn't know about some of these, um. Some of these things that. Should be tools, um, but also that are required and free and so helping us. Educate us on the history of it and how it. Got us where we are today helps me as a commissioner convey that to my constituents when having conversations about. You know, how we can help or why a permit is necessary, it's not. Because we want rules and we want you to feel regulated, it's because it's. Well, one, it's required by the federal rules, but also. It can help them in so many ways of. What you didn't know, then now we have resources to share of not only that, but. Learning lessons that we found throughout different scenarios of like. I just think getting the information out to the public is huge and this presentation has been super helpful to me, um. And kind of reiterates the conversations I've had, but. The more we, the more we know and, and can understand the history, the easier it is to explain that we're not.
I think you're absolutely right, and the other day when the subject came up and Eric said he was unaware of that, I said, oh, that's my fault. And, and in fact, I quickly came right back in the meeting and said. You, you're exactly correct, I need to come forth and, and let you know what our status is on this right now. And so that's why I'm here, um, and. Running through this, I realized there are other things just as well that in. Five, ten, fifteen minutes I can explain that help out, just like the addressing system, giving you a touch of that. But again, we could spend ten minutes talking about addressing. And it is shocking where it has gone in the last ten years and so many of these things do really change, there is. Yeah, you know, now we're in the next generation nine one one council. And the world has changed because of, uh, liability and, and issues that have happened and the state of Kansas has gotten much more involved. In all of those issues. There are a lot of things that we should come forth and make sure that you're, uh, well-versed as a commissioner.
And some of this is going to dovetail with, I'm on the Annie KES board. And they are going to be bringing, uh, proposed, uh, sanitation codes. Uh, in the near future, and so some of these things will be questions, I mean, how far do we go to self-regulate? And what the commission will approve, I mean, that we. Will have to go through the process of the public hearings and all of that, and then it ultimately. Uh, the commission has some leeway to pass or, or not pass certain aspects that could be. Dovetailed like within your sanitation code here on your. Uh, onsite wastewater treatment and things like that, so. Uh. It's kind of dovetails in with the same type of regulations, so I'm just gonna.
Absolutely, and as a matter of fact, I, I speak with Martha on a very regular basis, um. The, the rules on. Sanitation and, and they are looking at the code update, one of the questions which keeps popping up is. What should be the minimum size of a lot allowed in our county? Uh, that's, that's going to be permit that, and at the time, the realtors were saying, wait a minute, if a lot already exists. People have a right to sell it and build on it, well. Yes, accept that. We get people who buy a fifty by a hundred parcel property and then they want to put three mobile homes on it. I'm going to tell you what, it can't support it. And all of those things, you know, if, if there is one thing I do want to see occur. Is some form of warning and system that tells people when they're dividing land, this will or this won't work. Because, uh, right now we have no subdivision regulations and I don't want to make it complicated. We've got people who put in lots that don't have any access. And that we have to get, uh, we have to get under control somehow. Because they'll just create more problems for.
And this isn't just a rule thing because there are lots in the city that have existing homes. And the wastewater, uh, facilities, treatment facilities. Are going under, I mean, they're, they're at their end of their life. And the new standards is you can't place it in the acreage that's there, the lots are so small, the newer. Uh, style, it, it's very hard to design a new system to go in on these very small lots. So if you're not tied into the, the cities. Um. Waste water treatment there, you, it, it, it's very hard to, to get these, uh, systems. On the footprint, especially if you have an acre and you have a garage and a swimming pool, there's not much left. So, it's, it, it gets kind of sticky.
I agree with you, the difference is I don't have to deal with this stuff in the city.
Question for you, um, so we're. There's always rules, so if I'm a developer, a builder, homeowner, a farmer, whatever, and I start a project. Who's going to be out there to say, hey, don't forget to do this? I mean, I go to the bank and borrow money, do the loan officers say you have all these rules, are the realtors involved? Know these rules exist, so how do we educate the, the public or the contractors or whoever's out there?
Uh, great question. The website addresses it, um, we should have more information here that does, most people know. As a rule of thumb, so many communities, counties, everyone have these regulations already that most people know and they call in and they look for. You know, what permitting do I need to get this job done? Uh. But. We're willing to help work with any avenue that we need to try and get it out to the public, you just don't know exactly where to put it because. Wherever you put it, people may not read. If it's on the website. It's right there on the very front page of the website which says, hey. Here's a development permit, if they call the county. Most of the people within, uh, the county offices know because I speak to the appraisers, the treasurers, the clerks. And the register of deeds. Um, and they all know it, but. I, I don't know where else we put it.
Yeah. I would encourage people to check, make sure. And check when you start, it's so much easier to design something before you have anything else down. To see that everything's going to fit on your footprint and. Lay out your driveway, make sure that you've got right front, the correct frontage to put a driveway to, or a septic system. And then also, we're trying to catch everyone when they apply for these to inform them about the NRP. Because I know of a couple cases now that people have went ahead and built. And they didn't know anything about that, even though we're trying to have outreach, you know, to educate them that, and if they would have. Inquired about it or found out by the permitting process, it would have saved them money in the long run by coming forward, done everything right. And got the tax abatement for that period of time that's allowed and saved them a lot, so don't be afraid of. Coming forward, you may not like exactly everything. People don't like to be told what to do, but they do like saving money, so it's kind of a, it, it, it will balance itself out.
You're correct.
Thank you very much for the information.
Thank you.
Okay, Wes Lenter. Moroccan purchase order approval.
Good afternoon. Right, so I have two purchase orders for the commission today. Excuse me. Um, first one is the Moroccan purchase order. Moroccan is the devices that we use for our wireless network throughout every county facility. And usually we have to pay a Moroccan license and support for the, for those devices. Uh, but that makes it to where each facility you can log into, um, whether it be the courthouse or any of our other, our facilities. And your computer knows to attach to our network, it. Covers security and controls what can be accessed at different facilities also. That purchase order is in the amount of five thousand one hundred and thirteen dollars and twenty-seven cents, this is. A three-year renewal, typically we only do a one-year renewal. Um, because it's not cost effective for us to do multiple years because there's not a big enough discount. This year, however, they did it by two years, get one year free, so we're doing a three-year renewal, um, with a large savings. So this is the total for the three years of the. Total for the three years, yeah, man.
So technically it's expense above the budget.
So it's still, it actually still falls in our budget because, because of the amount, um, and we just purchased some new routers and those were cheaper. Um, so it actually still falls in our, in our, in our budget.
Oh, good, good.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the purchase order for five thousand one thirteen twenty-seven to Converge One?
Moved, second.
It's been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes three to two. And this is when we're going to have an addition to, uh, EO for entry.
Yeah, so, um, every year. We, we have to renew our ESRI, which is our GIS software. That's used both in our GIS department, which the maps that Roger showed today was our GIS that, that made those maps where you can view them. Um, it's their main software that they use for everything the GIS does. Um, and then the appraiser's office also uses the publisher or the viewer versions of the ArcGIS, so. GIS goes in there and puts in their data for like their ag and then they're able to see it on their viewer side. So this invoice is split between GIS and the appraiser. Um, for a total of four thousand six hundred and twenty dollars, three thousand thirty of that is out of IT GIS and thirteen twenty is out of the appraiser's office.
Do I have a motion to approve this present in the RIT directive?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Second, second.
It's been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes three.
Any other questions today?
Well, thanks, over. Thank you.
Alright, they, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um. I have one additional purchase order, um, and this, um. I would like to have discussion on, um, prior to, um. We briefly, uh. Talked about this this morning a little bit, but, um. The way the calendar ends, our budget season went, um, for twenty twenty-three. And the sales tax ballot question passing, um, in November. I think. I think the best plan, um, so this purchase order is for T S Connerd. For six thousand five sixteen thirteen. Um, and since we're still. We haven't implemented our new sales tax yet. I think having. The annual amount that's budgeted in joint communications. Be a budget amendment moving over to the sheriff's budget. So it doesn't affect adware and taxes because the money is in the joint communications. And. That way, sales tax can be utilized for both. The sheriff and police department for the split of servers that we've needed and that they've. Moved forward with. So Atchison County, we're going to I T services through the county. To save. But both P D and S O wanna do their own thing. Um, and since there's sales tax money, um, that is still appropriated to the city and to the county for this split. Uh, to me, it makes sense to do a budget amendment. That way, it comes out of the correct. Place, budget, sorry, it comes out of the correct budget. Um, moving forward. And then that way, when the new sales tax, the T S Connerd. For joint communications. Is being phased out. Did I explain that? Like, if if that doesn't come out correctly, or anybody has questions. I'm just trying to explain because we're still in the appro- apportioned sales tax. So everybody's still getting their. Sales tax and P D and S O both decided to go their separate ways. And we decided for joint communications to utilize county I T. Um, the budget amendment thought process, in my opinion, makes more sense to use the sales tax. To be put in as a line item for the sheriff to pay. His out of, just like the sales tax is available. However, they see fit.
But they would be intent for just this this year.
Just this year. And then, so thank you for clarifying that. And then we start the twenty twenty four budget process and then. That would be budgeted for adware and tax, just like in his budget moving forward. But because the sales tax. Is still a portion, everybody still gets theirs. And then this move happened after budget season and not knowing what the ballot. To me, this is just a clean break and then start fresh. That way, everybody is is taking care of the same. Regardless, once that new tax uh is in effect, April one. So.
Yeah, but this motion would not go into what next year's budget's gonna be. Just you're just talking about this invoice, what it's being paid by.
And for the twenty twenty three budget, because this will be a monthly bill.
Right, right. I just wanted to clarify. That wasn't gonna be a yearly uh move.
No, and.
It's it's just this year since it didn't.
I think it's just important to have this discussion. And so. That's why I'm just kind of coming out of left field, trying to explain my thoughts on how we should do this to make it clean. Cut and dry, done, and then we move forward. Um, with the the new sales tax that's going to be dedicated. Dedicated, so that it doesn't.
Interfere.
Yes, absolutely. And right now is a perfect time because, again, it's still apportioned. And the city gets theirs, the county gets theirs. We can, you know. Pay for them like we have been in years past, um, for for both of them and.
It's actually a budget amendment. It's not adware and tax for paying this.
So I wasn't sure about that, but it's budgeted under joint communications because we didn't. We do our budget like a year ahead. So in twenty twenty two, we budgeted for this year, but now that. The sales tax and everything's changing, it's in the joint communication budget, it's not in the sheriff's budget. So I didn't know, and maybe that's a.
It's more of a budget resolution.
It would be a budget amendment because you're going from a sales tax to a budgeted one.
Okay.
You're just gonna, you're just transferring that money so that in the sheriff's office, um, budget, it. We have made that money so that it comes out. So it looks like it's being paid out.
So that he, as a P O, that will, um. Let you do that amendment, or do we have to do anything more?
I basically will just um look approved of it. Yes.
I mean, this is the only um. Uh, paperwork that we need to do.
This law, the appraiser to make that payment. Later on in the year, you will do a budget amendment if in case we have any other.
Okay.
Yeah, so you will take action to do budget amendments later on in the year.
Okay, that's good.
That's what, that's what I was.
So I guess my question would be is. Can you do the budget amendment at time, like before the new sales tax? That way it's a done. I don't know that answer, but maybe we could look into that, just because.
So yes, we probably do it before April first.
I would love to see that timeline, just get it, like move it forward, get it done, and then we start. That way, nothing else comes out of. There, so. Um, okay, so for this purchase order, um. I would look for a motion to approve six thousand five hundred and sixteen dollars and thirteen cents to T S Connerd. With nine hundred and fifty four twenty three uh being paid out of nine one one fund. And then the remaining balance of five thousand five sixty one ninety. Um, from the joint communications for the sheriff's office, um, and then.
Out of the sheriff's computer services.
Sheriff's computer services budget.
And so this is per month. So are we gonna have to do this per every month? Probably you will per per do it each month, um, it could all change. Okay.
Yeah, we talked about this on an annual basis, just over the year.
Yeah, so should should I just do the math on that for annual and make a motion for annual or?
I I didn't know, because I mean, like I said. I guess we just stated that it was per month, and that this would be the.
For twenty twenty three?
Yeah.
Okay.
A monthly occurrence.
Okay, so I'm looking for a motion to approve. A monthly occurrence for twenty twenty three, beginning in January. For six thousand five sixteen thirteen to T S Connerd.
So moved. Second.
Been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes three to two. Did you want to just yeah? Perfect. Um, so Michelle, we'll talk about.
I am. Thank you. We'll try to make this as short and sweet as possible. I kind of put some notes together and emailed them. To or hand carried them to you guys. Um, I've been in contact with the Kerry irons. Out of the Adventure Cycling Association, asking Atchison County to consider supporting. Um, a United States bicycle route number fifty five. In the handout I gave you, I gave you a couple maps, how it's proposed to go through the county of Atchison into the city of Atchison. Um, and the very last page. Is the complete bike route, bike route that they're proposing, starting way up at North Dakota, coming all the way down, going through Atchison. Into um Brownsville, Texas. So basically. The. State Highway Transportation Officials, the American Association of State Highway. And Transportation Officials, along with this um Adventure Cycling Association. Are trying to get these bicycle routes. These are basically not your bicycle routes for mom and dad and the kids to go bicycling on. These are people who. They they bicycle for months at a time. Um. The proposed route will go through Atchison County into Atchison City, which is going to bring in revenues. Because people would probably stop in Atchison. Um, but there's really nothing that we have to do other than support this via. A resolution. So, um, there are options for signage, which. Potentially, we can get to, um, but there's no regulations. There's no regulations on how we have to keep the roads. Um. So I just had this information, um. And like I say, Kerry, I've spoke to him and very excited about this whole project. But they do need um support from the county. Um, they do have the routes, and I believe they're going to. Up to two times a year, you can propose changes to those routes. Once we have the resolution for it. So. But there's really nothing that we have to do in regards to signage and or road maintenance. Because these people that do this, they're used to traveling on. Not highway roads all the time anyway, so.
So are there also in contact with the cities along the route?
Yes.
So they're.
Yes, so they did, somebody should have contacted the city of Atchison. I'm assuming as well. Yes, yes.
Mm-hmm. When we support it, will they give us more info as far as like when they're coming through and different things, just so we can be aware?
I'm sure. Um, there is a couple. There's um like a draft map, the website that I have there, and then there was another website I thought I put in in this information for you. Um. That you can go in.
This is just an observation, because I remember when a few years ago, we had the bicycle. Across Kansas to or ended in Atchison. And that was scheduled without any input from the county. And we had some really tough roads at that time, and they were right up within a week. They were going, are you gonna fix your roads? Are you gonna fix roads? And it would have been nice to have, I mean. We, there was not much we could do about it at that time, but nobody had ever contacted us, you know, about having a major event like that. We could have even maybe scheduled them a different route in the county, but that. Had been laid out. I just, you know, I'm just saying that because at the time, it really kind of put us on the defensive. Um, you know, it it wasn't a good look, but that was.
Um. This map that I gave you, the very back, there's the two of them that are complete. Um, the other ones are all proposed maps. They're all proposed routes. So, um. I don't think it's anything that they're doing to to create the larger events. Um, in this here, it just basically says that your long distance bicycle tourists are experienced road riders used to varying qualities of road surface. Um, absence of paved shoulders, car and truck traffic. So they're 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 used to. They're not requiring us or even mandating anything from us as far as road maintenance or.
Expectations right now.
Correct. And if it's something that, you know, we we have a road that we're going to be repairing. Um. And making better than the road that it's currently on, we can maybe propose changes up to two times a year.
Wonder if that would do anything for grants when we propose them, if it's would be, you know. This is a a bike U S F uh bicycle route. I know there's some for bicycle paths, but I don't know.
Well, this one, it actually is gonna affect, or it's gonna actually hit on some of the roads that that we potentially could. Um, leaving Atchison on Patriots Street onto Price Boulevard, two seventy eighth road and Mount um Mount Pleasant Road. Um, Rollins Road, two sixty second road, Curlew Winchester Ottawa Road, Osage Road, and onto Wise Road in Jackson County. So it is gonna go over some of those roads. So if we do. Show, show support. Yeah, I'll just give you this copy. Yes, I will give you.
I was gonna say, I would like for Joe to read through this, maybe Pat too. Um, and just see if you've got any questions about. You know, during harvest would be. A lot of work. Well, and that's so narrow anyway, you know, that. Considering that, but uh. I I'm in favor of it, but I think that we should kind of. Put our eyes on it a little bit before we say this. I mean, if Joe can and Pat would. Sure. I didn't say yes, we we open your cell. It's it sounds like it's so playing stage only. I think it's nice for master planning for. Running bridge and. The county and the city and surrounding counties, like if you know it's coming through and you're gonna redo a road anyway.
Right.
Right. Maybe a chance to pick one or two to put a little extra lane in some areas or allow some. Better conditions.
And if if you would like, I can probably contact Kerry, and I'm sure he would be more than happy to to appear on Zoom. Or or something, so, um, I don't know where he's actually out of, so I don't know.
Yeah.
How how close he is.
Local bicyclists might. Go on out and go into the county and do more of that.
Right.
As we improve things.
Mm-hmm. So I just, um, I've been in contact with him a couple times, and I meant to bring this forward earlier. Um, he emailed me, he was like, hey, where are we? And I'm like, ah, so wanted to bring it to you today. So like I say, if you're interested in him coming and I'm speaking on Zoom, I'm sure he'd be more than happy. Um. If you wanna table it for a week, that's fine as well.
I I would like to hear from him and let everybody. Have a a look, look at it.
Okay, so do I have a motion to table uh the resolution? Um, in regards to the United States bicycle route fifty five through Atchison County.
I'll make a motion.
So it's been moved and seconded to table. All those in favor say aye. We'll table it for. Yeah.
Um, could you, if if he would be willing to get with us, uh, and on on a day, maybe it was. Depend on when he could be here, maybe we could schedule that. Could you schedule that?
For him to come on a on a Tuesday? Yes. I, like I say, I don't know where he lives. Um, he may be in a totally different state. But yes, I'm sure he would be more than happy to meet with you. So I can try to schedule that for Tuesday, and then you can table a resolution.
Yeah.
Um, for. However long. Yeah, that'd be perfect. I will just do that.
Thanks, Michelle. I also have, um. This is the um increases of salaries for elected and appointed officials that have been approved for twenty twenty three. So I would look look for a motion to approve all twenty twenty three uh salary adjustments for elected and appointed officials.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. I'm gonna clarify these are additional increases.
Yeah, they've already been approved in prior meetings. It's just one summary page for the auditors, but. Puts it all in one sheet for them. Um. Sorry, Michelle, I just realized I got out of order, but you were at the bottom. Um, but one more. Um, thing that I wanted to revisit, and I'm trying to find, because I know Pat had sent us a. Sample. And I'm looking for it. If you have it accessible, yes, please. So we had talked about it a little bit last week, um, of changing up the meeting. Um, instead of having two meetings and two agendas, to just do one meeting, one agenda. Um, I had some time to visit with other counties, kind of how they're handling that. And there are several that do one meeting, um, one agenda. Gary County is actually switching up what they previously did to the same kind of structure. Um, one of the things that they're doing differently that I thought was interesting is. We had proposed um to kind of take a lunch break in there. Or sorry, maybe I proposed to to do a lunch break. We talked about it. Um. Ten, take a lunch break and then come back for from one to two. They are. Going from the morning till one adjournment and staying in session over that lunch hour. For the hopes of people that do wanna come talk to the commission, they might be on their lunch hour and can stop up and. And visit with us. So I thought that was interesting. Um.
So I have held a comment spot later in the meeting.
Yeah, just. I mean, we can, and that's one of the things that I've learned from looking at all these counties' agendas, and I was talking to Michelle about, it's like. They're tailored. All different. I mean, it can be as simple as nine, I mean, road and bridge, county clerk, you know, it's so. It it can be so simple, um. And also have a public comment for that noon hour. And if for some reason no one's here, we give them that opportunity, but then we can move on, you know, to the next.
How would, so we would have a noon hour, but we couldn't leave. To go eat lunch.
Well, so that's what, so Gary, for instance, like, we had talked about going ten to noon, breaking for an hour and then coming back one to two. And they just power through ten to one, adjourn at one, unless there's more information or. More business, but then they're available through the lunch hour. So again, I'm, it's up for discussion. I just, I thought that was interesting, and I'm like, oh, that's kind of. Kind of considerate of the public who do have lunch hours and wanna come.
Yeah, but I wouldn't want to schedule an hour off and have to be here when no, if no one shows up. I mean, you, it would limit us, we would have to be available here.
Yeah, you just wouldn't take.
You wouldn't be able to take a break or or. Or eat somewhere.
We just keep going.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're still in our meeting, ten to one.
Yeah. I would rather not have that break in there. Right.
Yeah. Yeah, no, absolutely, so there wouldn't be a break.
Yeah.
It would just be, keep keep on trucking and from twelve to one, we might have the public show up and allow public comment and. I thought it was a good idea, I just, I hadn't thought about it until reading theirs.
I would have a structured time for that, I think, and so sometime during twelve would just show up, I think. Big time, I would think, but it's twelve or.
Well, and for them to adjust their lunch hours to be able to make it.
Yeah, we have being available, said whatever we're doing will stop, it's about the comment and go on.
Okay.
I like that.
I like that too. Um. Are you, are you altering um the resolution? I know you had our a rough draft. That you sent to us based on kind of what we were discussing last week um.
Well, so I think it would just be changing that one paragraph um. Where it said the Board of County Commissioners shall meet in regular session each Tuesday. Commencing at ten A M and ending no sooner than two P M, and we just change that to one P M. Um and then maybe adding something about a public comment session. To be scheduled sometime between noon and one P M.
You still want to begin the meeting now, put a comment early and then one later?
Yeah, that's.
Yeah.
I mean, I think as much opportunity as we can get, especially if it'll be this format where they can. Speak and.
And it won't be on Zoom the whole time unless we invite someone to come in on Zoom.
Okay, I mean, I'm up for a discussion.
Yeah. We have a just recording the whole meeting and then then posting it online. I think they they'll improve communication myself. This can be very clear what happened at the meeting versus what they think happened or what they heard.
No, absolutely.
Still, you I you I assume sometimes, I'm sure. I'll be clear as mud. Yeah, we can make that one.
So it, do we want to?
If you wanna add something, if you have an especially long meeting that you might wanna. Take a break or you say, well, we're just gonna stay until we're done, even if that's pretty few minutes.
So are we allowed, does it have to be spelled out for a recess? I mean, and.
It doesn't have to be spelled out.
Uh because it, the few experiences I've had, we just say, let's take a recess and stretch your legs or go get a drink or.
Or even you could have full hours, far as that goes, we will resume meeting at one o'clock.
I'll send that update. The previous resolutions state that the meetings should be posted online or anything?
No.
Okay. We need that or just, we're gonna do it, right?
Well, um I don't, it's not required, it certainly could be, we have, we we adopted the the. County adopted a charter resolution concerning our meeting date, and it requires that we have a regular resolution to. Say say when our meetings are going to be, and so that's the the purpose of the requirement, so. Um. About whether they're going to be broadcast or whatever is not really.
Okay.
Part of, part of that, but you could add it if you wanted to.
It's practice we're doing, so I'm not too worried about it.
It's also something that you can change from time to time if you decide you wanna do it. I'm for keeping the times, just like we've been doing, I think we've established a good rapport with our department heads. Um having a discussion in the morning, uh we've had, like this morning, uh we didn't even have. It was ten till one before we got out of our work session, we had so much to talk about. We're gonna have even less, I'll go down to an hour of work session with with no agenda. I think there's gonna be a line of people for wanting that platform, and uh there'll be less. Discussion in the long term if they don't want it to be on the camera, so.
Change is hard, but sometimes it's for the better.
And sometimes it's not.
We don't know until you try, so.
A great deal of those conversations in this morning workshop and previous ones that I've attended. Could really easily be done during a regular session um. If something is that concerning, it could be an executive session.
That's gonna be helpful of not having to wait until the afternoon to reconvene and get everybody back uh together if you have to. Talk about a particular item that needs to be an executive session when you're on a topic. Um.
Should that resolution reflect the fact we're actually gonna meet at nine o'clock, so nine to ten.
It does.
Okay.
It does, but nine to ten, it it said that we're meeting without agenda for, you were meeting without agenda for. Meetings with uh department heads. Shall meet an open session without agenda for discussion with department heads and elected officials. More Tuesday commencing at nine.
That'd be great.
That'll be good just for the random times that we need to be in a meeting together where like. Somebody calls me, hey, I need to get ahold of Eric, do you have his number? I send it to him because they're in his district, but I wanna follow up and say. Hey, did so and so get ahold of you, they were trying to get ahold, like, it gives us opportunity to kind of catch up on the things that aren't necessarily agenda items, but like, we need to be. In a meeting to 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 discuss, so that'll be good. Um I am going to be absent next week, so um. I was hoping that um. If there's any possible way uh we could have that resolution that I would make a motion today. Uh oh, Jason, sorry. Um. And. Okay. So just to kind of outline the differences from what we do now, where we start at nine. And we go until we're finished with an agenda in the morning workshop, and then we. Come back at one for afternoon meeting that's recorded. With many of the same topics for an afternoon agenda, this just makes one meeting, one agenda. That will be recorded and start at ten A M. And go at least until one P M each Tuesday. Um and then from nine to ten, no agenda, but just available for anyone that needs to run something by the commission together. Um and this would repeal Resolution twenty twenty two fourteen ninety three, so. The Resolution twenty twenty three, what would the?
Yeah.
I forgot. Just.
Fifteen sixteen?
Sixteen? Fifteen sixteen? Okay, um I would. Look for a motion to approve Resolution number twenty twenty three fifteen sixteen. A resolution establishing a meeting schedule for the Board of County Commissioners of Atchison County, Kansas.
I'll make that motion.
Uh and it's it's been moved seconded. I'll second, it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed?
Aye.
Okay, passes two to one.
Starting when, that has, was that on that? I would be starting in two weeks, honestly.
I need to, since I'm not going to be here, if that's okay, I would love for it to start, and I felt bad, it was a last minute. Um I have a family obligation, I can't be here next week, so. Okay, so we have a couple executive sessions, how long?
Thirty.
Okay, um so. Oh, I'm sorry, that too. Are you sure? I was like, I haven't pulled up, we can talk.
It can wait, is that not our domain?
Okay. Okay. I move that the Board of County Commissioners recess into executive session at two twenty one P M to discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel. As allowed by K S A seventy five dash forty three nineteen B one. And that the purposes of the closed session is to protect the privacy rights of the employee, and that the board. Come out of executive session in thirty minutes in the commission room basement of the courthouse. Those present will be the three county commissioners, H R director and road and bridge director.
So.
The new second, moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, yes, I was, I should have lost my time quicker and went upstairs. Okay. All right, we have uh another executive session. I move that the Board of County Commissioners recess into executive session at two fifty two P M for consultation with an attorney for the public body. Which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship as allowed by K S A seventy five dash forty three nineteen B two. And that the purpose of the closed session is to protect confidentiality of the discussion. And that the board come out of an executive session in thirty minutes in the commission room basement of the courthouse. Those present will be the three county commissioners, county counselor, I T director, county clerk, and H R director. You have a motion, go for it.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye. All right, we're heading into another executive session.
How long did you say?
I just thirty, yeah.
Thirty.
I heard you're naming it, I didn't get it.
Fifteen?
Okay. Move that the Board of County Commissioners recess into executive session at three twenty three P M for consultation with an attorney for the public body, which would be deemed. Privileged in the attorney-client relationship as allowed by K S A seventy five dash forty three nineteen B two. And that the purpose of the closed session is to protect confidentiality of the discussion, and that the board come out of executive session. In twenty minutes in the commission room basement of the courthouse, those present will be the three commissioners, county counselor, county clerk. H R director and I T director. All those in favor say aye.
Sorry, I'm supposed to be at a meeting right now with somebody, so I'll be late.
I just. Okay, we are back in session. Um no need for any additional executive sessions, and we. Went on the bicycle route earlier. Um any public comment? Okay, um do I have a motion to adjourn?
So. Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all those in favor. Okay, we are adjourned.